All right, we'll get started. I want to be respectful of everybody's time even though I know many and I are here for the second meeting at seven. Tonight's our tri-council meeting, so everyone here is probably representative of the elementary, middle, high school council. Thank you for serving on those councils. Tonight we're going to talk a little bit, just a reminder of the role of the school council. We're going to go over a little bit of our accountability data, talk for some of our 25, 26 schools, and talk a little bit about the middle school. So, the school council is something that we're required to have by law, chapter 71, section 59(c). And we're supposed to look at three things: identifying the educational needs of the students, reviewing the budget of the school, and formulating a school improvement plan. And then also, in chapter 71, section 37(a), it has a specific reference for the high school for reviewing the student handoff. Typically, we normally have sort of all of them look at it at some level, sort of under, you know, kind of the broad umbrella of the educational needs of the students. But those are really the things. So you're looking at usually school improvement plans is the key umbrella there, and maybe a little bit on some of the budget decisions. So typically, beginning of the year, September, November, we want to start by identifying those student educational needs, working with data, assessments, attendance, disciplinary actions, those types of things that we might have typically from the previous year, right? We're just sort of, we're getting that accountability data right now in an official format. We might have some beginning-of-year data to kind of look at as, you know, another snapshot of that. Normally, over the winter, we're going to start looking at our school improvement plan for the next year, right? So, and why are we looking at that? Because during that time, we're also going to be kind of building the budget. So we want to make sure that if there's major changes that we think we might need to make, we're going to need to add in some placeholders to that preliminary budget. So if we identify that, you know, there's an area, a curriculum area that we really need to improve, and we think we need to purchase a new curriculum series or something like that, we can get a placeholder in that budget. And then we'll kind of finalize those as we go through the budget process when we get into the spring, and then we'll just go through the plans hopefully by April. A lot of times, we might not actually finalize them, finalize them till over summer, that's why I was voting. We like to have them for the, you know, right around April, I guess it says April, that's probably like the fourteenth issue, I don't think I updated that, but it's the, that's one size we have our budget public. So a little bit of our accountability and data overview. So overall, our accountability rating is like no, not requiring assistance intervention, right? Which is basically, you either are requiring it, or you're not. Yes, or not. This is sort of a snapshot. Shows our progress towards improvement targets, which is goals that they set for you based on where you are. And then your accountability percentile, it'll open for the district, but that's more of a, it's sort of based more on your achievement, your quantitative rankings, right? So, Clinton Elementary School did very well, 79% of meeting, meeting or exceeding targets, so there was an increase of 11. Certain points, they were 68 last year. Their accountability took us up to 49, where it was 38 last year. Then, middle school took a little dip, high school took a little dip as well in the progress towards targets. However, the accountability percentile went up, which is actually a little bit of an anomaly you see in a lot of the high schools, where basically last year, if everyone can remember, the MCAS was voted to not be a graduation plan. So what they saw across the state was a huge dip in temp rate scores. And they kind of had our, they looked at the data, and they said that basically the amount of responses that were either blank or off topic in the essays sort of indicated that it was, there was a lot of direct impact to the effort or the level of seriousness in that. So what that shows up is, you're not making as much progress towards your goals, because that's based off your, you know, improvement from the previous year. But accountability percentile actually went up a little bit when compared based on the score to other schools. And this breaks it down a little bit more. This is the percentage. M&amp;E is meeting or exceeding expectations. SS is scale score, and then there's growth. Growth looks at students who have your, like, the same profile as you. So if you look at all the kids that got like a certain score in A grade, how did that, how did you compare to those same kids statewide, you know, like, seventh grade to eighth grade? So that's a sort of a quick snapshot there. One thing that jumps right off is like our, the elementary school, the number of students who were meeting or achieving, meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA went up by 17, 12 points, scale score up by five, huge. And then, actually, what we were recognized for by the state was our math scores now being over our pre-pandemic levels in grades three through eight, which is that math scale score up three here, down two there, but it was very, still pretty close to the, what they were looking at. All that growth is fine. When you look at those growth numbers, typically, 40 to 60 is considered like normal growth. The way the growth calculation is done, 40 to 60 is almost, so unless it's below 40, you know, below 40 would be low growth, above 60 would be very high growth. So, you know, we showed quite a bit of growth. Even though you see the score going down, there was a lot of growth at the high school. That's what I'm talking about where, you know, you're kind of looking at how they compare to their peers. Well, across the state, the score went down at the high school. So is the district. This is just a snapshot of the official accountability report. So I said, our overall classification is not requiring assistance intervention. So a lot of the same numbers that we had in the last slide, and a lot of progress towards goals. The way they do it is they kind of weight it. So they take, your score for this year is based on what you got, 40% of what you got last year, 60% of this year, and that's where you are right now for your overall. When they talk about those goals and your points, this is what they look at. So they're looking at your achievement in English, math, and science. And you get up to four points in each one. For all students, you can also get up to four points for your lowest performing students. And then, for the district, it's broken into two kind of columns, because this is non-high school, this is three to eight tests, this is high school. And the reason is the tests are kind of on a different, they're not three through eight, they consider the scale kind of interchangeable, temp rate is not. Then we have the growth, which I talked about a little before, high school completion, which only applies to the high school. And then the progress towards emotional efficiency, which you can see we did well at the high school, and well at the, you know, pretty well at the elementary level. And then the chronic absenteeism. Once again, you know, the problem with some of these things is a zero just means it went down. So it might have went down a little, and you got a zero, which is fine, not fine, but sometimes you understand that. I think it's always tough, because you look at these and you want to compare things, and sort of like, why are we getting better every year? But we've got to realize that, like, every year is a new class, right? Every year is a new group of students. So it's not necessarily as clean as just saying, here's where we were this year, here's where we are in the next year. So that's a district snapshot. This is sort of, so in your, my hope is that at some point in your role as a school council member, that the principal will probably show you, share some of this stuff. I didn't print these graphs out for each school on this presentation, this is just for the district. But this kind of shows like our ELA scores over time, and, okay. So, this is, shows the state trend line. This shows our trend line. So you can kind of see that while overall the state's kind of had this decline, and then maybe plateau, we kind of, we had a similar decline as them, but that we've been slowly kind of staying or going up. That's just kind of, is a snapshot over, over time. Math, this year we took a little bit of a drop. State's kind of plateauing, you know, kind of making up some ground, and kind of, kind of plateaued a little bit. But that's for our overall math. And science, our science took up, went down this year as well. Looking at the June test, we have a limited raise in quarter end test. So this breaks it down a little bit by subgroup. So I tried to break it down by, this is by subjects. So first, we call them ELA, math, and then science. And then within each category, you can see CHS, CMS, so it's by school, by subject. Those are four categories. Those are liter, I didn't make them up, those are literally the ones that the state, that's exactly what the state calls them, okay? And that's the ones that we have data for. If you're the black or African-American category, or the multi-race non-Canadian category, anywhere you see a dash, typically what that means is we did not have a significant enough population in terms of numbers to be considered mathematically like confidential, okay? So if you don't have a certain number of students, they suppress it, because otherwise you could almost be considered like giving out individual student schools, right? So that's why you see those dashes. And so you can kind of just get a sense of our achievement percentiles. And I think you can see, I mean, some of them are, you know, while you're looking like the high school overall, within the 23rd percentile, you can see that in terms of like English learners, though, our English learners in the 48th percentile, in terms of their achievement in ELA, we're 53rd in math, 52nd in science. So you can get some, some things there where you look at it, go, all right, there are some areas that we're doing things well. Like the elementary school, particularly if you look at math in elementary schools, students with disabilities, low income, high needs, all in the 70, 70-something percentile, okay? Which is great. So, this is, gives it a little bit more of a snapshot, where you can kind of get a sense of who's sort of like above or below maybe your school average, or for the state average overall. So you can kind of figure out what are the areas that we might want to drill down into. So this is a link, I think Kelly sent you guys all the presentation. This link will take you right to the screen where I literally would be, where any screenshots, okay? You can look by district, by school. These ones, you can't get to unless you have access, because this dashboard actually does give you permission to drill. So if you have access to this, you can actually drill that into student level data. So this is something that a administrator might be able to walk your council through. And then this is just kind of summarizing those reports. All right, so on September 29th, 2025, Principal Frisch and I went to Arlington, Arlington? I think we were Arlington, I'll mention one of their middle schools or something like that. But we were recognized for math and task achievement, grade screen rate being higher than our pre-pandemic levels. So we did receive in the mail this certificate of recognition from the commissioner. And if you look at our Clinton Elementary School, the accountability page, the overall classification, not requiring assistance intervention, like I said, you either are or you aren't. But the reason for the classification, part of it is, is actually listed as a school of recognition. And so, the elementary school for their scores is now a school of recognition, which would be great. Especially when you consider, how many years ago was it? Right before, I think we were still considered needing targeted assistance, right? So, yeah, went from being a 9th percentile to like the 49th percentile. So, so there's been a lot of great work going on down there. And it's great to see that that continues to improve. So this is sort of the same type of snapshot, but for the, this is the elementary schools' points, but there are goals. And you can see this, same idea, breaks down by the achievement, growth. There's no high school completions, and then no advanced coursework for them. And you get those points based on whether you met your goal, exceeded your goal, made progress towards your goal, or declined. So there's their, that's how they got to the, the 82. This is sort of the subgroup percentiles through the years. And then you can see how the school percentile overall, we mentioned it's gone up 11 points, but then that's, there's at least double-digit growth from 24 to 25 for every one of the subgroups, right, with the elementary school, including 24% toward low income, 21% for standard. So, if you're not sure, just in case you've never heard of it, for the high needs, high needs is pretty much a summary group of any kid, any student who would be included in one of these other groups. So basically, instead of, because the same student might be, you have one student with a disability who was an English learner who's low income, and that person's in all those categories. But in a high needs category, they would count one, simply one high needs student, and then those are all your high needs. So, as I mentioned, you know, when we look at that, you see it's a significant achievement percentile pieces by all subgroups, great. It is a school of recommendation, no, recognition. So, I probably typed that, sorry. Math achievement in our lowest performing students is increased, areas for improvement. Trying to perform, looking at ELA for our lowest performing students, continue to work on writing, and access for EL learners to our tier-one progression plans. Some of the current initiatives, continuing with the tier-one curriculum, looking at the high-quality instructional materials, using Apple seeds, written wisdom, Eureka map squared, and then continuing our co-teaching model. It's pretty much, you know, continue, a lot of it is continuing what we've been doing, trying to focus on PD for our EL learners, district-wide initiative this year. And then, some state programming, I will mention the advanced learning pilot. We are now shifting, we're pulling out of that, not pulling out of it, we weren't, we weren't funded for it, we're not eligible for it anymore, we're state-funded, because you happen to be targeted for assistance. So, we're not part of the state's advanced learning pilot anymore, but we are going to try to keep doing that same work that we started last year, we just, we more have the state grant kind of program to go with it. So for the middle school, accountability percentile was 27, same idea, no classification for like needing assistance or anything, and we've followed moderate progress towards goals. So you can see here, the points they awarded, so the growth points were fine, right, growth were like making, were progressing. Some of the chronic absenteeism numbers were good. The achievement numbers all were zero, like I mentioned, normally that just means there was a decrease. Anytime you have a decrease in something, you're going to get a zero as far as their points, even if it's one percent. Subgroup percentiles, these are some of the changes. So far, as I was looking, you know, you're looking at this, and you might be looking at your student, if you're looking at a school, school improvement plan, probably want to look at some of the things like EL, students with disabilities, or seeing those double-digit changes to what we're looking at. So with some of that, you know, what are areas of strength? Well, we did have typical growth, right? We were in the normal growth range for ELA, we were in the normal growth range for math. But areas of improvement, we saw that those two groups, disability subgroup, multilingual learners group, right? So that's the areas that we want to take in and say, what are we doing in that area? What do we want to be doing? Which, coincidentally, we're looking at that, right? So, not coincidentally, but as a district, we are doing a lot with our EL, with innovation, with our typical monitoring plan, and special education, we're also looking at our, like, so one of some of the things we have, expanding co-teaching in grade six, so sort of a new model last year, grade five, we did that with six last year, I think, and then now we've expanded to, we switched to IXL at the element, sorry, to middle school. So the idea is that IXL should be allowing us to get some data, as well as provide some intervention support, but it's in all subjects. So our math, ELA, science, and history teachers can all sort of access that as a, as a resource. We've looked at the grade six instructional time for science and social studies, where that was kind of being done before, it was sort of being, you're getting sort of like a half dose of that, so you try to readjust that, so it's more of a whole class. Increasing the instructional leadership team, trying to share some best practices during our faculty meetings, implementing the weekly college planning time. We do also have a new curriculum for grade eight, which is the DKP curriculum. And I did make a note on here, because I realized it wasn't in anything else, but there is a civics, right? So there's an MCAS civics exam that they gave in grade eight. We did get some results on that, but the results don't really have any context yet, because the state just sort of gave them, gave it last year. So really, it's more of like baseline numbers. So in future presentations, we'll probably see more about how we're doing on the civics exam. But this year, it was kind of like, it was just sort of that very preliminary baseline.
Steve, what do we do to benchmark what our old teaching model was in comparison to the adoption of the co-teaching model, and understanding what we're driving for results in that model change? Is that something that comes about later on? Is that something we look at every 24 or 48 months? Like, what are our thoughts on that? Because anytime you wholesale change a model like that, I'd be curious to understand what the impact was.
Yeah. So I think what we're trying to continue to do is sort of build off of the model we thought of at the elementary school, where we've seen a lot of those, a lot of those gains in those subgroups. I think this year, that's actually one of the things that we'll probably be looking at, we're going to do a, very good special education. And you were just at, what was that conference called, 27 minutes ago?
Oh, for the, um, process of, of special education.
Yeah. So with part of that, we'll be doing some other action planning, and looking at that data, and try to do, map that out. But I do think it is something that, so, I guess we didn't do a lot of introductions around here, I guess we probably could have done that, I apologize. But Jessica Murphy is our new special ed director, she's here tonight. And she and I have already had a lot of conversations. I know right now, I'm like, we're just trying to kind of get our feet wet and figure out what's what. But I do think that she's seen a lot of what we saw last year in the whole hiring process, which I think is that we need to kind of better align our programming, particularly special ed across our preschools. So we'll be looking at all of that. High school, so same idea, so the accountability percentile was 22nd, it actually was up from the year before. You know, it's kind of breakdown of points. And then if you look at that, you say, okay, well, our EL proficiency was, was something that was good, as well as sort of our growth areas. As in for achievement at the high school level, I bet you most high schools saw pretty much a zero in there, just because statewide, those scores went down significantly. So if you look at the subgroup percentiles, you know, same idea, two disabilities is the one that kind of jumps out to me as far as, you know, when you see a lot of areas going up, roughly staying the same, you have the one that, one that kind of went down. So again, examining that model at the high school. So, some, high school actually has some other data, including the AP scores. So, the column on your, your left is the number of AP exams taken. So you can see last year in 2025 was sort of the most exams we've ever given in the last, whatever that is, up now, seven years of data, six years of data. Okay, so we have 180 exams. And qualifying scores, which is typically a three or better, we had the highest number, highest number, which is 102 qualifying scores last year. The percentage of qualifying score, still pretty good, not as high as last year. But I would say that was one of the main shifts that they sort of started talking about, probably six or so years ago, when we started working with some of these other groups, is, is not worrying about this percentage as much, because the more students you can enroll and get to take the exam and expose them to that type of rigorous course, the better off you're going to be. And that's how you can get up to 102 instead of 38, because you've got more students taking more tests in there, and getting them exposed, and getting that experience, trying to prepare them for the fall. So, the high school, I think, is continuing to expand their AP program and offerings, which is great. That's just sort of the same information, and a little bit of a graphical form there. So, look at the data, high student growth, high growth towards math targets, and then decreased achievement by the students with disabilities group, decrease in achievement overall, and an increase in dropout rate. So those are sort of the takeaways for the high school. Some of the things, there's a lot going on at the high school, innovation pathway designation. So, in June, we were designated having an advanced manufacturing innovation pathway. We have just been awarded a grant to look at getting an information technology, and two, two new ones, information technology and a business pathway. So that's something we'll be working on this year. We did get our early college designation last year as well. So, Pittsburgh State and Mount LeChuson are our partners. We have 34 students enrolled in that program, so there are 34 students at, you know, who are taking, earning college credits right now. Two of them are at full-time at Mount LeChuson at this point, and eight more might be going to Mount LeChuson in the spring. And that's a big component, that was a component we were missing to get that designation, is you have to make sure that you at least have that opportunity for students to take courses on the college campus, not just taking the courses here. We have the freshman experience class. We've made some changes a little bit to the freshman and sophomore experience classes. But one of them, freshmen now includes a short course on, it's called spreadsheets, docs, and AI, to start kind of talking a little bit about unofficial intelligence and some of the pitfalls of that. We have an AI working group, I talked to Mr. Wired this morning about the courses and lessons that they run in that course from the state. And same thing in sophomore experience, we've added financial literacy component to the sophomore experience. Each, each group has their monthly CPT meetings, AP courses continue, AP personal finance will probably be kept, being added to part of the business pathway. And so the EOL pass is still going on, so, and increase time on learning in the class. All right? So, you can't get to the, well, you can probably get to some things, but in N1A Analytics, which is one of the password protected things, if you wanted access to it, your administrators would, there's a school and district of school test. would, um, there's a school and, and district of school test item analysis on. So what's nice is to try to sometimes drill down into this data a little bit more, where you can look and say, okay, well, is there a specific, like, okay, we didn't do well in math. Where did we do well? What were the questions we didn't do well in math? Those types of things. And sometimes you might find that, let's say, you know, you, you trace it back and say, well, we didn't recover that topic, so how do we address that in our curriculum? Or we might say, wow, there was a common incorrect answer that all our students picked. What was that misconception? How do we better teach that? So, this is a link that'll take you to the MCAS digital library. What you can do there is you can look and see what those questions literally were. Um, I will caution you, one of the things that's frustrating about that is we don't release all the questions, they only release some of the questions. And you know how that goes, like, the ones you're really interested in will never be a released item. But, uh, but you can at least get an idea when they're talking about a strand, um, or a topic of like standard, what the, what type of question are they asking about? What does that mean? And then this is open architect, that's that link to the, uh, graphs I showed you before. Same thing, it's also password protected, and those are things you can use to pull up as you drill down in your school. All right? So last year, we started doing a lot of work of, uh, well, that kind of ends my accountability some. Are there any questions on the accountability? Yes?
Um, I have a question.
Yeah?
First of all, what do you think was like the most effective at CEPES? Like, was it like, was it the curriculum, or did you really like co-teaching, or like, what would you?
I think, I think first of all, the teachers have like, they clearly, they advocate for what they believe that they're like health advocacy is good, because based on a lot of job embedded coaching in all areas, we've had, um, strong leadership and coaching through all our, our curriculum implementation, we have strong coaching and job embedded training within our co-teaching model. I think my first grade students are doing it so well, they're exactly how people calling up all the tires to come look. Um, and I think just the PD and the student things from everybody, it's sort of like growing, giving the, a lot of, but a lot of support that that works.
I think one of the big things too, when we really started taking a look at it a few years ago, was realizing that you can't, uh, you couldn't just sort of like triage your way out of it, right? It wasn't one of those things where you just looked at like the kids who weren't struggling readers and said, okay, well, we need to give these kids all reading. Like, that wasn't going to fix the problem. Like, what we needed to do is we needed to look at what, what is our tier one instruction? What's the instruction we'll provide to every student at a young age, so that we hopefully can bring everybody up to make those interventions. Now, now, now when you get intervention, it can be more truly targeted on those kids and you can try to identify those gaps. There was a lot of work originally spent on strengthening tier one.
Yeah, I do think though, especially in elementary schools, a lot of places, you just give curriculum and they do it, but in order to get like equity, I do think having the support that we've had and all of the leadership we've had, even with our teachers, just like going to training and sort of getting everybody on the same page always, um, that was, was probably the most impactful.
I also wanted to know how you define students with disabilities?
Students with disabilities is defined by the state, so that's going to be by anyone who has an ID. So that's usually a, we have to report that data to the state, and it's basically going to be anyone who has an ID, so whether that was, there's no kind of curve on severity of this question.
So then who, who's that?
Oh, uh, it would not, because they would not be classified as that. So basically, we report that to the state, it's going to be like, do they have an ID? Or they're good, and this is probably all reported, we don't do any, they might get protection if they're in progress, but they're not reported until it's actually happened.
So I have a question that kind of follows the one that was just asked. So, on the growth percentage for students with disabilities at the elementary school, the number I think was like seventy-six. So that reads that seventy-six percent of our students with disabilities showed growth from the year before. Is that?
No, but the growth percentage is saying, if you look at the, the aver, the, the growth for that, that group of students, it was, it exceeded like seventy-six percent of, it was better than seventy-six percent of the other schools who were.
Okay, all right. So it doesn't do any comparison to how the students with disabilities did last year? Like, you're not looking at the same group of kids from second to third grade, let's say. You're looking at that subgroup, which is a totally different set of children.
Right. Growth is supposed to try to do that, because it's supposed to compare, it's supposed to compare you to, like, if you're a third grader now, it's kind of giving you a ranking on who they call you, like, a third of that grade today. If you're a fourth grader now, basically, like, it would say, they're going to look at all the kids who kind of had like the same scores as you in third grade, and say, now we look at how they did in fourth grade, and we're going to rank them all, and we're going to see where you landed compared to your academic peers. And then obviously, I believe it normally is two years of data for that peer group once they, once they happen, so in fourth grade they were.
But that's definitely a strong testament to, to how we're servicing our children with the IEPs, the fact that they place seventy-sixth.
Yeah, that's a very high number.
I mean, that's a really good number.
Definitely a, a very high number, yeah, because the percentages are, are, were very, very good data. All right. So last year, we went through, we revised admission statement, vision statement, and the goals over the last year, so this is just, uh, recapping that. Our core values, we, we kind of realigned them to match the state's, uh, sort of, uh, terminology, uh, so we're focusing on academic achievement, understanding by itself, understanding value in others, and engaging with family, community, and the world. We had our overarching goals in academic achievement, social movement, wellness, duty engagement, uh, human resources, society, technology, and funding and funding. So those were our key areas, we looked at those action steps last year. For our goals for this year, which we presented in the summer, we kind of formulated over the summer, um, so our first one was talking about effectively utilizing technology to support teaching and learning while minimizing distractions. So we want to focus on the effective use of one-to-one technology in the electronic curriculum. We are a one-to-one district still, we just want to make sure that we are using that. Um, we want to increase understanding and appropriate use of artificial intelligence by both staff and students. This is a hot topic, as I mentioned, we did form a working group, um, so we have, I think it's eight of us on it, and five teachers, two administrators, and, and me. So we've been going through some of the state guidance documents, today we've started sort of drafting our internal document of sort of translating how we did on the state self-assessments, what we think we need to do. Um, and then review and adjust, uh, and review, make adjustments to practices regarding personal electronic devices, cell phones, smart watches, or whatever. Um, and a lot of that's going to be, uh, there's, keeps being rumored of a state law that's going to come out with that. Um, they're finding it much more difficult to write a law than I think they originally envisioned, because all of a sudden now the list of, everyone wants to add another exception to it, um, and it's becoming quite a lengthy list of exceptions. So. Our second goal, listed based on our English learner outcomes, by focusing on rapid English language acquisition and overall program durability. Uh, so English language proficiency benchmark plans are something that the state now kind of requires you to do. It's not as formal or legal as like an IEP, uh, for special education, but it is, uh, it's similar in terms of kind of making a, a, a theory of action and a plan for how you're going to help the EL student learn, acquire, uh, language skills. Um, and also looking at implementation of sheltered English immersion practices, basically how we're supporting our multilingual learners in the classroom, uh, in the general tier one classroom. So one of the main, uh, we've been using elevation, uh, which is a, a program, um, in years with our, with our ML teachers, to kind of look at some of that data. We're now using that to, uh, create the benchmark plans. We are also, um, have the, this year we have professional development modules, and we actually kind of started the year off with sort of a introduction to the elevation, uh, professional development modules, and started doing some of those work, some of the work in the small group stuff here. And our third goal is kind of getting back to sort of our multi-tiered system of support, um, trying to make sure that we're providing all students access to great level of material, trying to remove barriers, providing individual supports and opportunities. And this kind of varies a little bit, um, by grade level and context, so it's kind of set up there. So some, 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 uh, areas, we might be, when talking about access to very low material, you know, you're looking at, uh, you know, like I said, eighth grade, history, we're, we're just starting a new curriculum this year, right? Some of our others, we might be in year two or three, and we're just looking at evaluated. Um, but still that same idea across the board. And that's pretty much our, our goals for this year. Any questions on that? All right, so looking ahead to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so, uh, what year is this? So we're, I tell you, this is like, this is such a confusing calendar year for me, it gets worse for me in like two weeks. Because what happens is, believe it or not, we're still, we'll still be putting together our FY twenty-five end of year report, which ended in July. We're living in FY twenty-six right now, but in like another week, I'll be building the budget for FY twenty-seven, so I do have to say that a lot in the conversation, like, what year are we talking about right now? So, um, but one of the things that we keep trying to look, look ahead to is, is twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And what twenty-seven, twenty-eight is going to be, is that's when the new schools is scheduled to open, uh, which, you know, as, as it's designed, is designed to be a four to eight school, which would mean opening that's also going to lead to some grade level configuration, reconfiguration, so it's going to have an impact across the district. Uh, and what we want to do is we want to be smart. So as we start looking at like, what are we going to do for FY twenty-seven, which is next year, we want to have at least an eye to twenty-eight, right? Because we don't want to sort of, you know, make some move next year and then we have to like undo the year after, because all of a sudden we haven't changed. We want to try as best we can to make sure that, you know, if we know this position that's going to get added to the new building, or, or eliminate a new building, or whatever it might be, that we're thinking about that as we build next year's budget, so we have some context. So for the actual construction, um, I know, if, I don't know how many of you have been over at the construction site recently, or walked up by the residency, I think if you walk by the residency, you kind of get used to it. Uh, I go normally every Tuesday, we have a construction meeting over there, a lot of times I end up walking around. So there's a lot done, like underground. So they did all the dirt, they did all the geothermal wells, uh, those are all dug and interconnected, they have the foundations going around, so about three-quarters of the foundations are done, I'm sure it's more than that, I'll find out exactly where they are tomorrow when I go to my meeting, but it was just about three-quarters when I was there last week. But, the fun part should start in about a week or so, because steel is scheduled to arrive, I think it's like November sixth or seventh, was it?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth now?
Yeah, crane has to come first.
Okay. So seventeen. So, and they are now saying that they think they're going to get all the steel up in, it's like half the time that was bid, they're thinking they're going to be able to do it quicker. So they're, they're saying we probably will have a topping off ceremony, like, they're thinking it could be that, uh, like first week in January, uh, which is when, topping off ceremony is only when they kind of put the final, this is the final ceremony will be in place. Uh, so we could be looking at doing another sort of way to groundbreaking, there's normally a little, uh, ceremony where you can talk about that. But once you have the steel up, it won't look like, uh, like just kids playing in a sandbox anymore, it'll start to look like a building, right? Uh, and then, and then we'll be able to kind of see what that'll look like, and then they'll probably usually get some, you know, you'll start seeing some, the envelope going up. Uh, fall twenty-seven is when the new building is scheduled to open. Would you try to, you know, people always say, oh, when's it going to be done? Well, it's probably not going to be done until like the summer of twenty-eight, because remember, there's like, there, we're chasing everything, right? So you build the new building on the fields, once you can get out of the new building, you tear down the old building, you build a new parking lot, once you build a new parking lot, you tear up the old parking lot, you build a new field. So it's kind of like, everything goes around. So there's some things that you can't, it's all the same site, um, so when, in the fall twenty-seven, we'll move into that, you know, school will start in the new building, but we'll still be demolishing the old building, you know, still that kind of stuff going on. Uh, this is the project website. So this is always here, um, I don't tell you. This is a time-lapse camera that they actually have mounted on top of the, uh, it's on top of the current school looking out. So this one was last update was September thirtieth, we'll probably do one in a few weeks at the end of October, and you can just kind of get a sense of what they've been doing. I feel like when you watch this in the beginning, it looks like they just kind of moved it here, and moved it over here, and moved that. All right. So what's, what's neat about this view, in a way, is this is from the, like, the gym of the, roof of the gym looking out. This is actually going to be the front of the building right here. So it's because the building had a tucked back, it's kind of faces sideways. So when you see this, like, this area back here, so all back here where the old baseball field was, uh, back where, back where I coached a young Chris Nanoff in freshman baseball, we only lost one game year, year of it, right? Or no, two, Saint John's and Milford, but we beat Milford the second. The, back where that field was, that's where the geothermal wells are, and then this is the entrance. Back here, this is the first wing they did, this is basically going to be the seventh and eighth grade wing, then they started, so that, if you, that's pretty much, you know, foundation was pretty much done here. Come along up here, this is like the cafeteria into the music room, come across the main entrance, kind of work your way, this will be the admin offices, nurses offices, that is the sixth grade above it, and then back, this back corner back here, the last section I get into is the fourth and fifth grade wing. Library, media center is kind of in the middle, uh, so that's how it's oriented. So it's kind of neat, this is really all taking shape. I tell you, the funniest thing is, I feel like things look so small out there right now. When you walk the site, you'll look at like the footings and they'll be like, yeah, this is the classroom, and I'm like, it can't be the classroom, this is a tiny. And then you go and you like pace them out and you're like, oh no, it's, it's bright, it's just huge, and there's no walls, and you like lose perspective of what's going on. All right. So that project website, I'd like to show you that, you can visit that anytime you want, um, and, and we try to update it, a lot of times it's just getting updated with meeting minutes and that kind of stuff, but that time lapse should get updated at least on like a month a basis. like, a monthly basis. This is some draft thoughts about ideas for the new building. Before I talk about all these, I want to say, with preface, there's a couple things, is, what we're doing right now is sort of like, I'm literally rolling out things that we've been talking about, kind of behind the scenes, is what may or may not happen. Part of doing that is to get feedback, right? Like, it's two years away. So, that's kind of, you know, as we, as you have middle school councils, or elementary school councils, or those types of things, providing that type of feedback, that's why I'm sharing with you. So, one of the things that we've talked about was potential looking at treating it like two schools in one, where you almost have the seventh and eighth grade, which are, the building's being designed though, the building's being designed to kind of keep seventh and eighth grade, and fourth and fifth grade separated, with sixth grade kind of in the middle, right? So, it could sort of go either way. This will put seventh and eighth grade on the Clinton High School times, have them ride on the Clinton High School buses, basically follow the Clinton High School schedule. Why would we do that? It promotes the ability for C M S students to access high school courses, also for efficiency for offerings, it allows the potential for shared staffing between buildings, but also easier access to after-school programs. Grades four, five, and six, we're kind of staying to current C M S times, they ride on their own bus, they follow their own unique schedule, okay? There is a financial factor to that, in the sense that high school buses are mostly empty, right? Most upperclassmen don't ride a bus. So, putting seventh and eighth grade on high school buses, and then allowing four, five, and six, who pretty much all ride the same bus, D M buses, or all ride the bus, is going to, is going to help with our, our allocation of resources for the buses. Leadership, so if you're going to do something like that, like, I've, I've actually worked as an assistant principal, and I was a principal of like, a middle high school, kind of trying to run that way. I think you'd at least want to have, you'd have someone who's a principal, and then I think if you're going to do it as two separate schools, you'd at least need to have one assistant principal for sort of the, help for elementary grades, and assistant principal for the junior high grades. We, hasn't brought up to sort of double check the seventh, eighth grade principal designation. There is sort of a weird loophole, where if you had to make it that technically their principal is the high school principal, then they might be eligible for varsity athletics, which right now, our seventh, eighth graders can come up to J V, but they can't come up to varsity. That's something we could look at, if it was something that made sense. Grades four and five, I think we'd probably still kind of stay, stay the same, with like, one teacher of math and science, one teacher teaching alien history, maybe like, a focus special for a trimester, where they get art, music, and STEM, which would be in the new makerspace, and wellness, or the health P E would be kind of throughout the year on a rotating basis. Grade six, I think given grade six is more of like, a swing grade, even though it might be on the upper elementary time, try to get to more of a team approach, so you have the potential for different teacher for each subject. There's a couple weird things, I say potential, because just given our size and the nature of it, you'd have to have some teachers who are still teaching multiple subjects, right? So, if I need at least six sections, or probably seven sections, let's say, math, one teacher can teach five, so I'm going to have to have someone else pick up two, right? Which isn't enough for a full-time staff member, so we might be able to listen like, or you do a four and three, or you do something like that. But trying to make it more like a middle school model, there's also some things we have to look at with licensing and that kind of stuff in there, just to make sure that the middle school model matches all the license, the licenses for our current teachers. Looking at something like one trimester of each for art longs, T, project leads the way, potentially in something like a sixth grade experience type class, that could allow for like, a rotation of academic support classes, opportunity for enrichment intervention, that's an idea. It's kind of just modeled sort of after like, what freshmen and sophomores students do, but it's a chance to try to bring in some of those things, not just rotation academic support classes, but also you could do some things with guidance, career exploration, anti-bullying, whatever those types, artificial intelligence, digital literacy. Seven and eight would be more like a junior high under this kind of idea. Basically, students sign up for their courses, they take their required courses, they probably all take special rotation that included one with Spanish, and technol, like, shop, the tech ed class, education technology class, the project leads the way, art project leads the way, two different types project leads the way. And then, they have a seven period schedule, so they have a whole, a period here that could be used for electives, enrichments, interventions, ensembles. We could create sort of a seventh, eighth grade experience if we needed to, a sort of where you go if you didn't, if you aren't in something else, and we could look at that and see how that goes. But that would, by doing that, it would sort of build in this extra period, that either students could sign up for the year on Spanish, or student needed an academic support class, or something like that, we could get that to do. Music, I'm going to figure out exactly what music would look like. Four and five, I think it would keep music classes. Grades four through six, there would be ensembles, seventh, eighth grade, there would be ensembles. It would be a matter of like, what would keep, what level of music are we keeping? Right now, seventh and eighth grade don't have music, five and six do, so then that would, this would maybe move those two down to four, four and five, having the music, so the idea is just that becomes staffing and capacity and having those old staff.
Steve, I think that's an opportunity too, though, where we should be looking at, like, if you're in the band, band's an extracurricular activity, it happens after school, just like baseball does, and basketball does. I'd like to see us try to at least entertain getting away from pulling kids out of math and English and anything else, because they're going to play an instrument. Like, I think that has to be, like, front and center of our, of our priorities around our other teachers that teach these subjects, because it is an extracurricular activity, and I get that sometimes you have to pull people out, you can't have thirty kids there at once, but you'd never pull a kid out of English for them to go like, hit fungos in like, field baseballs, right? So, I think that, we need to figure that out as we do that, I think.
I agree. I think it's something that we want to look at, and I know that the people are going to get passionate about that on all sides, so. Couple transition notes, F Y twenty seven, so, F Y twenty seven is next school year, the twenty six, twenty seven school year. So, we're probably going to try to end the year as early as possible. It's like, this year, we have two weeks off for Christmas, last year, we had two weeks off for Christmas, next year, Christmas is a Friday, so, coming Christmas Eve, and leaving our, I don't know, but we're probably going to shorten that break a lot, because...
There's no we in that, none of us are...
The quicker, the quicker we get it done, the quicker they can start the transition to the building, right? Because we have to move everything out, and then we have to tear the building down, right? So, the earlier we get that process started, the better, so you'll probably see some things when we come out with a draft calendar that will reflect that. We could probably look at having a full day, full day P D day in May, typically have a full day in March. What we're probably going to do is start talking about packing, and what that's going to look like, and that process, and how, where things go, and probably looking at something like half days for the entire district if you have to, to do, do half days for the high school. Giving half days to the entire district would allow everyone across the district some time to prepare for the packing and the transition. Because you got to remember that last week, the school, high school has half days for exams, pre K and K are done already, right? So, you're roughly grades one through eight, well, four, five, six, seven, eight are all going to be in the new building, so they're packing. But then even for grades like, one, two, and three, a lot of them have been moving around too, depending on, you know, we're not just going to vacate like, a fourth grade hallway and leave it empty. So, there's going to be some different things like that.
Rally some parents to help pack boxes, and volunteer, some people can volunteer.
And then the flip side, if we're going to go all the way to the twenty, oh, the twenty eight school year, that's what we're talking about, that'll probably start as late as possible. So then, what you might see for that is, we might end up front-loading our professional development, and really not bringing students back until after Labor Day. Part of that is, that gives everyone a few days in the new building to try to like, actually unpack, move in, and make it feel like a building, also gives us time for troubleshooting. So, if all of a sudden, something pops up that we didn't know was, you know, an issue, and kind of, fall under the radar, and someone realizes, hey, my class doesn't have electricity, I don't know, whatever it is, right? We can try to get somebody there, we have a free day weekend where we could say, hey, you finish this, right?
Jesus, boy, that doesn't happen.
So, all right?
Oops.
All right. Is the minute over, sorry folks? Does anyone have any questions? All right, like I said, none of that stuff I just said is like, set in stone, right? That is me, I, I like to call it like, planting seeds, right? So, planted the seed with all of you, and now we just want to see how it takes, and get your feedback, and you can share it through the building, you can share it through, you know, whatever, you can send me an email, whatever you're comfortable with, because we want to start trying to, to figure this out now, so that while we're doing next year's budget, we've got that eye to two years' hope, okay? All right. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, thank you for being part of the school council.
Thanks, world, sir.
You should be...
I mean, we're on the, we're on the front page of the agenda, which means, not, not long. We have to set records tonight.
Yeah.
Feed it. Whoa. This guy's very hasty towards you.
When people tell you to wait, totally get a week off, and I said, I didn't have a break, I think they should have a whole two weeks.
You know what I thought you meant? I thought, I was, I went, I was...
I think they have one week to take. Dude, I from the school, we had a talk on the schedule for the following year, and we're still waiting for the school to begin the fourth semester, so I thought it was a great deal, but I didn't like that, I said, I mean, I knew, don't have to give you some like, school, we have to do some stupid, and I did browse this off for a, it's nice. I said, so, we should go to school, and I told Paul Mark, and she went, ask me, the teachers are like, what are you talking about? That's a half day, and comes home, they're here, like, didn't tell me.
I just...
I know, I thought she was going to beat me up. No, she was going to beat me up.
At first, I was wondering, I was like, do I seem up to date?
But I know when the teacher back there, they're cracking, but Reagan being, and this, she had Reagan, Liz goes, this is dope, that's Manny. So, I didn't go down with the other, she's cool.
I know, I ran out the side door like a coward.
I know, everybody tells me, I can like, I can be nicer.
I was in the fifth grade, and I came, and I was like...
You too, now we're friends.
No, I just, I was like...
Stayed at that same classroom all day.
No, I, I just was like, fuck Reagan.
So, you don't like...
I do, I do, I just was like, but she was coming so far, but you got to get...
I started by Steve Johnson. She was like, what's this saying? Sorry, we don't have any per diem money for, because you have, you know, Liz, so Liz called me, so I had to talk to her, like, apparently, I didn't show up. I go, wait, I've never heard her say so, she's freaking quiet, Liz goes, she's Manny.
I was like, wait, five teachers.
Ellie was, you know, it's weird, big apology, I was like, that little kid, I can't...
I can't carry vocabulary words, I remember that.
I know, that's, that's, burns on all the energy in all of us.
But, I was an absolute shell shock, like, that he had, that he moved, run the, run the room, so, yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. But, I remember coming in the fifth grade, and Julie Winnell saying to me, what were you doing from there? And we were on the front row, and she was like, delicious.
I don't want that to schedule, I just want to show up in that hole, I'll be late.
Because you could tell, like, he was a lot more dense, but it's funny, really, the first week I got here, I had to, she had to take a quiz of material that I didn't know, and one of the things on the quiz, I remember she did it, was, she gave me three numbers, and she gave me a story, and I had no idea, and I had never been taught that, but I knew divisional fraction, you know what I mean, so it was weird.
They didn't have any, you know, for a lady, yeah.
Because you can't explain to the kids today, why you asked me this, and, yeah.
See you, Maddie. Gee, say goodbye. You don't want to stay for this part of the meeting? This is exciting stuff right here, it's going to be good. No?
Start working on the AM party, five to two.
Whoa, whoa.
No lunch on your desk.
Just work through your lunch, work through your lunch, it's all good, you're fine.
No lunch on your desk.
Steve, do you need us to move these tables? I can wait till afterwards.
I think we're fine, you guys okay? I mean, I think we're okay.
Listen, if it'll keep you from coming up here, we'll leave them right where they are.
I feel like every time I do a presentation in the beginning, I'm like, uh-oh, this is going to be done in like, twenty minutes, at the end, you're like, oh crap, I'm running out.
Yeah, but you covered all this stuff.
I did, that's all.
No, we wait, no. Okay?
All right.
Could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever created. Thank you. Bring to order the school committee meeting for Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I will entertain a motion to review approval of the minutes from our October sixth meeting.
So, move.
Start it now.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And we don't have bills today, that's right, because, and that was out, and we took care of that ahead of time. I was going to say, I felt a little off kilter there for a minute, it wasn't a second motion to...
We'll probably have to vote on two of them at the next meeting, but we're okay, yep.
Yeah, perfect. Is there any public comment this evening? See, none, you will close public comment. Do we have a student representative this evening? Not seeing one. C T A.
Thank you.
P T A. What up?
I waited till I was...
I always want the handouts with you.
I think your name is mentioned twice.
Oh, it is? Oh, never mind, hit it out, hit it out. Let's read it, let's read it, hold on, let's read it.
Oh, that was a quick response, too.
Do you like reading my notes out loud?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for the chocolate cake. So, we have completed our book fair for C E S for the fall. Dr. Meyer and Matt Baracus attended and volunteered this year, thank you so much. On the last day of the book fair, we were able to purchase over fourteen hundred dollars in books, that were directly added to Ms. Frisch's bookcase and the C E S library. Thank you, Matt Baracus, for your Ted Talk during the fair.
Matt, listen, I don't even know if that should be public knowledge, but okay.
We appreciate your support of the P T A and your insights on how to continue to make a difference in our community, and I just want you to know that, even though we told you face to face that.
Thank you.
We will be at the Halloween walk on Wednesday in front of Liberty Tax, handing out non-candy treats. Our fundraising night with the fountain is on November sixth, there's a flyer attached, watch for that on Facebook, like it, love it, share it, all kinds of stuff, help us spread the word. And then come to the meeting with your snack, which is the same night. Christmas movie night, featuring the Polar Express Experience, is booked for December seventh at Entertainment Cinemas in Lemonster. The Experience is sponsored by The Pink Goose, which is part of a local family here in Clinton. There's some details about what their mission is and what they do there. The Clinton Middle School has their scholastic book fair the first week in December, we are currently recruiting volunteers for that, and I know Becky is still working on seeing if we can continue the book fair during the half day and open it up for parents, so, we will continue to let you know about that. Still working on budgets and bylaws, we won't mention that our contracts end in June, and our next meeting is November sixth, at the administration building, and that's it.
Listen, with all Bill's experience in civic duties over the years, I'm sure he can teach you and walk you through how to change your bylaws to stay in perpetuity, to stay in perpetuity if you choose, I mean, we'd love to have you stay, I mean, just saying.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, Matt.
They might need a little help with it.
Yeah, we'll follow you, please, please. Yeah, I think we've edited that document by the, um...
Yeah, it's, it's another, we don't have some...
All right, that's it, you know where to find us.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you. I just have to say, I, I unfortunately wasn't at the last meeting, but this glow run, and when I ever saw that thirty-six thousand dollars, I just, like, bravo, bravo.
Thirty-seven, thirty, we get thirty-seven, every hour counts, we are actually able to, and I can publicly say this with Ms. Frisch, Mrs. Frisch here, we are able to, based on last year's number, fully fund C E S's spring field trips in full.
Awesome.
So, that is, that is the actual trip itself, the busing, the action, where they're going, based on all the numbers that I have from last year's data.
So that is, that is the actual trip itself, the busing, the action, where they're going, based on all the numbers that I have from last year's data. With some leeway and wiggle room for inflation, because everyone knows everything goes up, we are able to cover it in full, so families will not be paying for the elementary school field trips in spring.
That's great. Who else?
And I'm still working the numbers for the middle school, we might actually be able to cover their, the fundraiser class that came from those grades as well, a good chunk as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Any CPAC? Elpac? Remember?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Tomorrow we have an Elpac meeting, you're welcome to come if you would like to be there. She's one of my mother of the Elpac, it's the first time for her to come in here, and for me, very important that they know who you are, and what you do for the school. On November twenty, we have in our EL Thanksgiving hotline, it's gonna be in CES, starting at six-thirty, you're also welcome to attend, we're gonna have those high schools band, and the chorus, and we have some student dancing, and a lot of food, yeah.
Awesome.
At what time is that at?
That's gonna be at six-thirty, Thursday, November twenty.
Okay, thank you.
At CES.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Dr. Meyer, over to you.
All right. So, Annette couldn't be here tonight, but she did put together the quarter one budget report. I'm not gonna go through too much of it yet, it's pretty early, but it is just kind of giving you, you know, there's a lot of encumbrances in there that we'll keep fine-tuning as we go through the year. You know, as of right now, everything looks fine, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. The circuit breaker, she did put a little circuit breaker, anticipated balance in there, and what you can see is that the, where we budgeted, we budgeted more circuit breaker for this year than we were anticipating to take in, so we were kind of dipping into that reserve, so we're anticipating a budget right now of about one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-one in that circuit breaker account at the end of this year, and then, so we'll have to factor that in as we make adjustments to next year's budget. We have to spend that much at least, because you have to spend it within a year. The question will be, how much of the reimbursement we're getting this year are we going to allocate for next year's budget? So we'll continue to monitor that. And then there's just some school choice enrollment trends, and just kind of showing that we're trying to, you know, we are trying to kind of get a little bit, trying to be in the net positive for the school choice on a year-to-year basis for this year, and hopefully next year as well, with an anticipation of wanting to make sure that we have those funds available to us in FY twenty-eight. You know, we, there had been sort of a balance in there, and we had been kind of overspending and dwindling that balance down, so now we kind of made that shift for this year, next year, to kind of see if we can get that balance up a little bit more, so we can help us once the Student Opportunity Act funding is over. So, that is, you know, quick overview for the financial update. One other topic, I guess I would just throw in, because I think it kind of falls under financial, it kind of also falls under, I guess, just our, you know, it's almost more human resources, maybe, I don't know what you want to call it, but we do have an insurance advisory commission that meets, they've met a couple times this year, and we just had a meeting Thursday, and, so, we used to be a part of a consortium with Minuteman and Shoba, and then that folded, and then I think the last two years we've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and so, but we've kind of done those on like a year-to-year, like you just, you're on, you're kind of on your own, you do, you get a rate, and you renew it. So the, I see meets to kind of discuss what they want to do, would they want to make plan change, recommend plan changes, recommend different carriers, or anything like that. Right now, it's sort of seeming like, you know, changing, making wholesale changes is difficult, so I think on the last meetings, one of the consensus was to sort of stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but then maybe continue to explore the GIC, which is sort of the state's kind of group insurance commission, and, but I just know that recently, Blue Cross Blue Shield has been in the news, one for having some significant deficits last year, and one for having a potential contract dispute with UMass, and if they, if Blue Cross Blue Shield doesn't, if you're not able to access UMass healthcare providers, it's gonna be a major concern for most of our employees, because that's, that's right around here. So, we're hoping that doesn't happen, but it is something that I want to just at least throw out there, that's kind of happened, because I don't know what financial impact that might have as far as, you know, what we might have to do for shopping around for insurance or anything like that. So, that's just something, like I said, I don't have any answer for it, I don't know if it's, you know, there's nothing I think that's official that makes, that means we have to panic right now, but the news, whether it's just posturing or not, but the news isn't, isn't great right now, so we'll continue to follow that, but that might require us trying to take some, some swifter action than we had thought, if Blue Cross and Blue Shield is gonna have a significantly limited network in this area, so. All right, that is my financial update, with a little insurance bonus. The next topic was policies for second reading. We have these three policies, you guys approved them all last time for first reading, I had not received any feedback or questions or concerns from anyone, so unless any of you have any comments, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt them.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, and the middle school pathway policy is supposed to be submitted to the state by November first, I'll submit that probably later this week, now that it's approved, and the graduation, the competency determination policy, I think, is due for submission to the state by December. All right, in terms of academic achievement, I've got a fifty slide presentation I'm gonna run through quickly with you.
I didn't catch all the details the first time around, I mean, if you want to go through it.
No, so tonight was our, if anyone just, is just tuning in for the meeting, tonight was the tri-council meeting, which was also livestreamed, where we talked about the academic achievement, we also rolled right into some planning and potentials, potential looks for the new middle school building projects, so that, we did include that in this packet, so, I mean, it is public information, I'm not gonna rehash everything with you guys, you know, the short, the short part of it is, as a district, we're not requiring any assistance or intervention from an accountability standpoint, high school and middle school are also not requiring any assistance or intervention, the elementary school, on top of not requiring assistance or intervention, is actually a school of recognition, which is great for them, and, you know, for the, as far as the project goes, we're just kind of looking forward, so as we build this year's budget, we keep an eye for two years from now, when the new building will open, and we are looking at steel coming in a few weeks, and probably a topping-off ceremony, might be the end of December or early January, my guess is the ceremony won't be till January, but it might be, if we can sneak it in, we might try to do the thing where people can like sign the steel beam maybe that week before Christmas or something, because that's probably something good to do while it's, you know, that chaotic week anyway, so.
You have to do it outside, though.
Yeah. See.
And no gloves.
All right, so I think that's all I have, unless you guys have any specific questions on anything that, I know I've, you just listened to me talk for like an hour or so.
Okay, from the advisory committees, it looks like we have some follow-up meetings coming up with several of the subcommittees, so that's great.
Yep.
I think there's other subcommittees that just hasn't been relevant to have a meeting just yet either, so.
Right. The big one is safety on Wednesday, yeah?
Yep, safety Wednesday, I got that. Any questions from the committee in regard to subcommittees at all, any concerns, questions, thoughts? Okay, great, do we have anything under hold business? Anything on a new business? Not even one thing, not even one.
I snuck insurance in with financial update, I could've sat on that, but.
I will consider it a, so moved. So moved it is. Thank you, folks. I didn't want to ask any, I was like, this, based on, which means essentially, the teachers and the IAs are great, and then, but the whole town.